All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 27th call meeting. It is six o'clock at this time. If I could call this meeting order, if I can get approval of the agenda this time.
Second.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
If everybody's standing, I will do the indication. Let us pray. Dear Lord, as I work, we'll look around this room. I look at the many blessings that each and every one of us are here with today. We've got people who are hurt, people love, loved ones, people have, people in homes that are sick. Dear Lord, you know what each and every one of our needs are and our, and you also know what our county's needs are along with the state and this country. We lift those needs up to you. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with this board as we make decisions on behalf of this community that would be pleasing to you. In all this, I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move on for our first new business item tonight. It's a sales ratio study and results. I think everybody on this board's had opportunity to look at results. I want to start off and y'all bear with me because I made myself some notes. But I'll start off with this one thing with accountability, transparency, and leadership. I got a phone call earlier this morning and it's a gentleman I think a lot about, a lot about. I'm very proud of him. It's called constructive criticism and he and I had a talk. Wanted to know how this worked. He told us that this board of commissioners didn't do everything within their power to correct this now. We all need to ask them to resign. I had another call later. Why the board of commissioners hadn't done anything up to now? We had, knew we had issues. Failed leadership. When leadership fails, the community fails. I'm one of, one of, one of five on this board. I'm speaking for myself. I don't speak for this board. I respectfully ask the board of commissioners, I may ask the board of tax assessors to consider asking the director, chief appraiser to resign for the failed leadership that has been displayed here on this previous audit we had or the current audit we have. We're in trouble and we need to fix it now. Anyone else?
I'll wait for comments, Chairman. We're going to have comments from the board, from their board.
Want comments from the board or comments of board commissioners? I think we need comments from the board commissioners because the comments from the board need to be in their own meeting, I would think.
All right. I might be glad to go, Chairman, and I might be a little bit more brash than you are. Simply looking at from my personal situation, y'all all know that I appealed my taxes this year, my appraisals, and went in front of that board. And I'll just say that I was very disappointed and very concerned at not just the results, but I guess the knowledge of the board. I was told that that board does not review the appeal process, does not review appeals. I mentioned to them that in state law and quoted the state law that said all appeals in front of the board of assessors is reviewed by that board. I went back and looked at the minutes and the minutes showed that these appeals, these values were presented to the board, reviewed by the board, voted on by the board, and approved by the board. So to be told that that board does not review the appeals or does not review the evaluations or the assessments of the parcels was very concerning to me and was told that it had never been done, that that was a job by the tax assessor's office. If that's the case, and we know that we've had three years of issues, we were cited for them, we appealed them, we failed that appeal. We are now got another report that shows not only did, are we in as bad a shape as we were, we're in worse shape. The taxpayers of Jones County have lost a lot of money, if nothing more than just public utilities, for being lower than the state required appraisals and salary studies, the percentages. With that being said, I'm not sure how, and when I went to the Board of Equalization, which was another concerning issue for me because I was not appealing my value, I was appealing uniformity. I showed multiple examples of dismal uniformity in the county. Some parcels side by side, some parcels across the street from each other, very similar parcels, similar sizes, ages, all the, all the things that they, they go by, even sales and non-sales parcels. And I still couldn't get an answer. I was told by the Board of Equalization, that's a board of assessors issue, not their issue, even though I was appealing uniformity. Uniformity is not gauged. So my question is, if I appeal uniformity, how do I get a judgment on that appeal from a board that says, that's not our issue, that's a tax assessor's issue? And if we've known for two years there's uniformity, and I'm going to say it in a public meeting because it's been brought up before, there are people on that board that has the uniformity issues that I addressed. That board voted for that assessment value, voted for those to go out to the taxpayers. They voted that these were right and proper and mailed to the taxpayers. And that is as far from the truth, Chairman, as it gets. Because they were not right, they were not proper, I was told that there were overrides on these parcels that caused them not to be increased for the last four years. I asked what an override was and how was it left on there for four years? I was told it was obviously a mistake that had been left on there. I'm concerned that in a year that we put all tax valued property on a revaluation, and we said, I asked them specifically, did everybody's taxes in Jones County increase? Absolutely, because we went from forty to sixty on the precursor that we put in our formulas. So everybody had, now you talk about depreciation and, and this and that, you go up and down on the forty to sixty per square foot. But I asked again, and it's all recorded. So everybody in Jones County was increased? Yes, sir. Okay. Again, that's not true, absolutely not true. And for a board to know that or should have known that and still approved it, knowing that one of the board members was absolutely not increased, that causes me concern for the taxpayers of Jones County. While it was a concern for me and I appealed it, it was a concern for the taxpayers of Jones County. And I'm of the opinion that I have no longer have any confidence in the chief appraiser, the processes of that staff. Now whether that's under leadership or it's the staff members themselves, that can be determined. But I have no confidence in the leadership in that department or no confidence in the leadership in that board. I would go for the chairman. I would see every one of them replaced. And that's, that's just my personal opinion.
Mr. Martin, you want?
Okay, I'll go next, Chairman.
I'm looking back and forth.
Right, right, I'll go, I'll go next. I had a phone call earlier today and, first off, let me go back. I didn't appeal any of my properties this year because I know they're still valued very low. And I'll, for the record, I called or sent a text to Anthony on Friday because I wanted to ask him what's up with this sales ratio. And so I talked to him Friday afternoon and I'll be up in front about it. I asked him, I said, how many properties in Jones County changed this in value pluses? He said, we had ninety-four hundred properties for Jones County that changed in 2024. I said, great. When did the others change? And he said, we're working on it. We're already making some changes for 2025. So I sat on that front conversation over the past few days and I had a phone call earlier today about a frozen list of properties that haven't changed for three or more years. And I kind of asked the question, well, just how many is this? They said, I don't know exactly, but I've heard a number of five percent. And my question is, and I want to see it in writing, in paper printed, I want to see a list of taxpayers that are essentially frozen, that have not changed in the last three years. A frozen list. I don't know who they are, I heard names, but I don't, I'm not pointing anybody out tonight. But to me, and I know all my properties changed this year and that's great. They moved in the right direction, more closer to where they're supposed to be. But I'm concerned about a frozen list. If it's three years, was it frozen for three years before that, maybe three years before that and three years before that? I don't know. But I can't go back that far. But I'm curious and I think I would ask this board to make a request to the tax assessor's office to see and be provided a hard copy of a frozen list of people that had no change for the past three years in writing within fourteen days of this meeting. But that concerns me of how it's just frozen out there. No increase, no nothing, no, and see that, everybody else has got to pay more for that. Everybody else that has increases is paying more. And to me, I get heartburn. And I agree with a lot of what you said. And I'm glad to see ninety-four hundred changes in 2024. But when are the rest going to catch up? Some type of adjustment, some type of whatever. Because I've seen properties and I'm, I know we don't need to chase sales, but it's, I'm concerned. I'll leave it for there.
Chairman, if I could add to Commissioner Woods. I agree, I would also like to see that list, but I'd like to see a list of reasons with it, justifications of why.
Justifications, exactly.
Of why they're being frozen or why they're overridden.
I would sure like to have prices from 2021 that are frozen, whether it be parts on heavy equipment, building materials, but it ain't there.
I've received quite a few calls also. And it's very concerning, especially we're all in, every one of us in here are taxpayers. We all have to pay taxes and it's, we should all be fairly paying taxes the same way. One person's tax shouldn't be figured up a different way than anybody else's. Just because some people have larger stock holdings of property and some may not have that much. It all should be depended upon the same figures. And I don't think that that's been happening. I know quite a few phone calls that I've received of some people that are paying for property that has not had anything done to the property. In fact, it is no longer even under a use except for storage. And it increased almost as high as some of their property that they have done some development to. And that's, was very shocking that that property, almost identical jobs and, I mean, businesses, but I think that we do need to look at something.
Mr. Martin?
Failed leadership. And that starts right here. We appoint the people to these boards and we entrust them with the business of the county. And we don't make changes. We say that the pool of good applicants or good board members is slim to none. And so we get the best of the bottom, kind of like the sheriff's argument when he used to come here begging for money for his folks or scraping the bottom of the barrel. And until we hold people accountable and put the best people in position, you get what you get. I have the privilege of being on this board twelve years. And in twelve years, we rolled back the military twelve times, I think. And up until this last year, there was not really a problem with the tax assessor or the tax assessor's board, or the Board of Equalization for that matter. But these problems have been surfacing. There is a Brian Jackson who looks at the Tax Digest, who's aware of what happens. There's Jason, there's the tax assessor himself, then there's us, and there's the board. So there's a whole bunch of people involved in this process. And I can say very stoutly that I know we did not make this an issue in the previous eight or nine, maybe even ten years. So why now? So this has been going on for a year or two or three. There are assessors who go out and assess property because supervisor does not assess properties. You task people with doing that. And as much as you task people with doing their jobs, there are people who are going to be incompetent. I don't know the number of people who have left that role. How many people have left that office in the last few years?
Had a couple retirements. That's all I can think of.
That's two, two. Any resign or termination?
Not that I recall.
So two, and then there was one left because there was only three? And that, that go out and do the work?
Well, there's, Bill was left and then Kim Adams as well, but they do two different types of assessments.
Right. So we need to look at who goes out and does what assessments, where they do the assessments. Because this is simple, you know? An O G E Six Sigma Black Belt would say you drill right down to the individual who assesses the property. It's that simple. Whether they were retirees and there's some leftover Linda Sibley ghost tax values on the books, probably. Probably. And we're in the middle of this double edged sword where you want your taxes low and you fight for them to be low, but you need them to be higher to fit the state requirement. And six in one hand, half a dozen the other, and over a twelve year period, I know that there have been properties left off the tax roll that he's found and put on the tax roll. And I know that there have been more people complaining about his presence. And I'm from Connecticut, I'll tell you. Very few people that I don't like, but when I walked into his office, I immediately did not like him. But that was his persona of New Jersey, the arrogance of what he knew and so on and so forth. But in saying that, it was do your job. And over the past seven years that he's been here, there have been some complaints and they say you're not doing your job unless somebody's complaining. I would like the assessors to stand behind their assessments if they made them and to justify the nine thousand four hundred or the six thousand six hundred that weren't addressed. Because at the end of the day, they're responsible. Then at the end of the day, he's responsible. Then at the end of the day, we are responsible ultimately. So there's a bunch of failures. Then we can talk about the disconnect between the zoning and planning office where property is assessed prior to completion. And then when it's completed, it's not really assessed at its full value. And whether that is documentation or something that happens from that office to the tax assessor's office, it needs to be fixed. And that's what I said when we had the last meeting, it needs to be fixed. Now you want to do a peer review, and I'm okay with a peer review as long as we're not on a witch hunt for people. We're on a witch hunt for the process to fix that. And if we're going to fix the process, great. You got one year to do it, there's a penalty from the state. If you don't get within this ratio, you're gone. I happily sign on to it. But until we do that, nah. Because we have to do the right thing by the people first.
Chairman, if you don't, if you don't mind, and this is not, this is a, I just want to answer, speak to a couple of things that Commissioner Martin said and it's not, it's not an argument, it's an opinion. We have those all the time. This has not been a problem for the six, seven years he's been here. I don't know what the processes have been, but it has been a real problem the last three years and we knew it. And so if you look back at our values, they're supposed to be, you know, thirty-six to forty-four. They want them in the thirty-eight, they want them forty. So thirty-eight and forty is acceptable. We were between thirty-seven and forty up until about three years ago. Then we dropped down a little, then we dropped down a lot. And we start saying, okay, we got to work on it. We know there's a problem, we got to work on it. Now we're a year behind. So when we're starting to work on it, we're already a year behind. Well, the next year that after we're working on it, we had thirty-two point one, which is lower than we were when we found that we need to start working on it. So what do we do in that year? And right now, we're still looking at a year back. So what is ours as of today, we won't know until this time next year. But I feel sure if we hadn't changed process and we're talking about fixing it right now, it wasn't fixed in the last year and we're going to have these same problems. We talk about the taxes and the values of the property being higher. The values are going up. People are getting higher values and they're getting assessed and they're getting a tax notice that says their values are going up and their prices are going up. We, we might be a problem, a part of the problem enjoying the fact that we can roll back the mileage rate to meet our budget. But that doesn't change the value of their house. It only changed the amount of money they have to pay us. And, and I think that's where the commission comes back and says rolling back the mileage rate is keeping the value the same. So what the state's not looking at how much tax money we're bringing in, they're looking at the value ratios. So I don't see that as a problem. And the biggest thing I'll say is tax appraiser staff. We've talked about that, we've looked at that. They did have a couple of senior people leave. They got a short staff in my opinion. And I really wanted to see this budget request. Tax assessor's office has four requests this year and we ask them to prioritize them. The number one priority in their budget is additional travel, training, and dues. The number two request, Office furniture. Was office furniture. The number three request was a new employee. And the lowest, number four, was a personal property audit service, third party company to come in and, and review. But that's only personal property. That's not real property where we've got the real problem. So I don't see us throwing, I don't even see us throwing anything at the wall and see what sticks. I don't see us with a, a process designed to fix where we are. And I, and if you don't, you know, the, the old saying of the definition of insanity, keep doing the same thing expecting different results. I don't see that we've changed anything. I don't see we'll have any different results next year except worse, in worse shape. And you're right, when you said, you know, we've got one year to fix it. I look at it a little different. I look, we only have one year to fix it because we, we're two years in the hole and probably three, knowing where we are now. When we get this next year, we start getting a five dollar per parcel penalty and they don't accept our tax digest until we get back in that range. And without a plan right now, if, if I was two years into knowing I had a serious problem with my budget at home, I, I believe I'd have stopped going out to eat by now. I believe I would have stopped doing whatever it was doing to, that my budget was going down if I had to do, if I had to make changes. And I just don't see that we've done anything. You know, and which is why I would like to see the notes on these overrides. That's huge to me because that's a lot of money that we've missed out on three or four years. And I'd like to know why. Was it a mistake on the staff level? Why haven't we fixed that at the staff level? It's a, if it's a directive from leadership, whether it's the tax assessor, whether it's board members or whoever, why haven't we fixed that? And I'll go back, I don't want to keep harping on the board, but we send board members that has required training. We pay for that training. We require them to go every single year. And for me to ask a question that is state law that says, do you review these assessments? And the answer was no, we've never done that. I think we appoint board members to do that business. And for them not to know that that's the business they do is a huge problem for me. So I, I stand where I am on it and, and I'll, I'll back any play y'all want to go. The peer review to me was on the table last year. I'm past that. Peer review's fine with me, but I'm ready to make changes.
I think you, you have some valid points, Sam, and our harsh reality is we don't appoint board members with a clear understanding of what their roles are. We're just happy to have somebody. And then when they get the role, we try and, hey, yeah, you need to go to this training. Because I'm a hundred percent confident that most people don't know what they're supposed to do when they're appointed to some of these boards. And this is one that's important, critically important. And I think knowing that now, you might reevaluate who sits on that board. I've called for some board dismissals too, because I see a level of incompetence that I've never seen before. I don't get my way. But I say that we have the ability, we have the ability to make a decision on that department. When we saw he had only three people, somebody should have said, you're going to hire somebody. You're going to hire somebodies. Just like when people are going to retire, we have some overlap in certain cases where that information exchange happens and a knowledge basis kept safe and sacred. And in that role, I don't think that we did that very well in that department.
I would, I would agree with that. And I think that, I would argue that that department is the only department head that we don't control. And every other department, we have expectations. And I think it's public notice that, a public knowledge that we have made changes in department head positions because of incompetency, inadequacy, or whatever the reason was, we've made changes in department heads that we appoint because they were not performing the services at, at the level we expected.
I would say.
I don't think any department head has ever, that we have ever told any department head, you need more people in your department because you're just not doing the job. That's for them to come ask us at, at budget hearings. This is the first time I've ever heard him ask for more people and it's third on the priority list. If it were me, that would be the only thing on my list and the top priority and I'd fight like hell to get it.
Well, you know, in his seven years, he hasn't gotten much of what he wanted from us. So asking for personnel might have been a big ask for him. And I'm going to say this again, we knew that that department was short and we could have done something different. We could have been proactive. And this department, this Board of Commissioners, with respect to department heads, is normally reactive, from water reactive. It took our Parks and Rec Director to get fired, I mean, to get arrested for us to do something. And I'm not going to talk about Public Works other than we created a position for a guy who should not have been. And that led to us hiring somebody. And that led to us hiring somebody that was much better. Again, not us being directly proactive, and in this instance, we have to be. And I'm telling you, I tell everybody else, if that department needs five people, put five people in it. Because they've got three people out there, I think, doing assessments now.
Four.
Four?
Yes.
All right. And one, two are both newish, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we need five, and maybe we need six, I don't know.
Or seven.
Or seven.
I mean, it's a.
Yeah.
And I have that many parcels that have not been reviewed, and then I look at, do five percent of sixteen thousand parcels, that's eight hundred.
Yep.
They've frozen at least three years.
Yeah, and, and the terrible part is, if, if ninety-four have been done, they may not have been done correctly. Right? So now we got to go redo those to, to get back to where we need to be. And it's a mandate, it's a mandate that it has to be done in a year, it's a mandate to our taxpayers. And we need to be proactive, we need to tell the taxpayers, hey, guess what? There's no more low taxes in Jones County. We have to move in this direction because the state wants us to go there, and because we have to go there. And some of those good passes or good nods may not happen. And expect an increase of thirty percent, you know? But don't get me wrong, you and I, and maybe one other person on this board have felt some of that. And I, and I too appealed, but I didn't go to the hearing, I just, I, I let it go after I heard your experience. And I said, it's okay, because my properties are so low in general that I'm going to let it slide. But for this year coming up, he gets another staff member, he gets the mandate that they have to move to twenty or thirty percent more. And then if he doesn't, you know, I think you have every, every right to, to ask for the resignations. But I think when you don't do what you're supposed to do, in terms of us as the leadership, you, you can't do it. You know, you have to be on a work plan to, to be terminated, you know? And it, and I think to ask this board to vote, that's kind of silly.
I respect your opinion, Commissioner, but maybe a thousand percent disagree.
Amen.
I think we've done our job that we were able to do with a department head that is not under our control. The state law dictates what his requirements are, and he has failed to meet them for two years in a row. We knew about it the first year, we offered legal assistance to go to the appeal to see what the problem was. I got this, I don't need any help, I got this. He don't got it. And I, I'm not, at the expense of the taxpayers and the expense of our budget, by how much we've lost, I'm not willing to wait another year to see if we can fix it. No, I, I, we got to fix it now. And yes, we are very reactive as a board, because, and I, this is not an excuse, we're a part-time board meets twice a month, we hire people and put them in place with the expectation that we pay for their training, we pay for their knowledge, and we pay them for the position that they're required to do. And when they don't, I, don't do it, our reaction be, should be, fix the problem or find somebody that can. And we have done that. But in this situation, we don't have that control of that department head to make a, a work plan. That is, that, the state law makes the work plan, and we have not achieved that work plan yet. We knew there was a problem, and we said, there's a problem, what are we going to do? He came to us and gave us an hour-long meeting of, the problem was not a valid problem, it was an error on behalf of the state with the random assessments that we done. We, in all fairness, we have not had him back in front of us to tell us that this is another year of errant, random parcels being evaluated, or if there's a different reason why we went lower than the reason, than we had last year, and have not fixed that. But in my opinion, if it's a staffing issue, we were not asked for more staffing. If it's a process issue, the leadership there is state mandated and trained to create the processes in the department to do it. They have not done that. If it's staffing issues that, that are not qualified to be appraisers or whatever, and they're still on board, shame on him, just like we say, shame on us if we've got department heads that are not qualified to do what we expect them to do, shame on us if we don't replace them. And that's the harsh reality of it. In the business world, your business would not lose money, and you keep the same people that are supposed to be making you money.
Yeah. You know, again, I don't know the status of this particular sample, far be it from me to, I, I, I'm not trained in tax assessor or appraisal. So I don't know what these numbers look like. I don't even know if these were a party, a part of the parcels that were assessed and changed. Or is this a, a handpickery of that happens? Because they seem to be very low, you know? And again, if, if this is indicative of the state's picks, I, I would like a, a larger sample size.
Speaking of that, Daylon, I did ask Anthony on Friday, I says, how much, what would it take, how many days could I, till I could get it? You ran every property beyond the arms-length transaction of family-to-family or that sort of thing that you discount. I said, every property divided into residential, agricultural, timber, commercial, industrial, put it in those three categories, every sales for 2023. I would like to see that. Not a sample, a full pot of numbers. Average it together, where are we at? That's the true number, that's, that's, this, you know, if this sample was taken from the low side of things, then it skewed. If it was taken from the middle, you know, cut off the top, eighty, you know, above eighty, cut them off, below twenty, cut them off, go for that sixty percent in the middle, that's a fair sample. I don't know where this was chosen from.
Right.
But I basically asked for a full sales beyond arms-length transaction, which is a fair transaction. And that would be a more realistic number. But that would take some time for somebody to sit down and go through approximately six hundred-plus sales.
Chairman, one last comment. I think this is important.
I've got one person signed in.
Okay. I just think this is important. I want everybody to know and believe that this has nothing to do with the people that are sitting on that board or the people in that assessor's office. I don't, I, I've been here all my life, several generations, I have no problem with anybody on any board. I love them just like I love my next-door neighbors, I think they're amazing people, I think they're great people. I think whether we have the wrong people in place, or whether we don't have the confidence or the competency in the right place, that may be the issue. But as far as people, I don't want anybody to think that I hold a grudge or have a problem with anybody on their board. Whether I think they're, they're right or wrong, they're still good people. They're very good people on those boards, and I, and I appreciate them for serving. They're not doing it for the money, you've said that all along, not doing it for the money. But there is a required expectation for the taxpayers of Jones County.
Well, this board's got a problem, and the state says we've got a problem. It's not going to go away. Asking the state to give them brighter, no, that's, you know, us going through another, asking for another appeal, one of y'all can go, because they've already told us we're not doing it right. Told this board we're not doing it right. Understand they ever, even told them what they needed to do to do it right.
We have one person signed in, thankful this agenda. Mr. Allen, you here? Give us about three minutes, and, I'm trying to keep you from talking, I'm just.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I'm Alan Woodruff, I live at 180 Hardy Chapel Lane in Jones County. I ca, I came here for two reasons, and you gave me my second reason when listening to you. Number one, I first came to this board, I want to thank you, Mr. Widener and Mr. Kitchens for, for helping me find a way to get an answer. Guess what? Jones County does give that, and always have, the tax assessors told me they didn't. They didn't even know it until I, I came in that Tuesday morning, and you would have thought I had sugar dri, dripping on, on, make, oh yes, we've always done that. And I asked them, excuse my French, why in the hell didn't you tell me that when me and my wife came up here, and we could have been a month, two months ago? That tells me something. I attended the tax assessor's board meeting. Let me tell you my opinion. Nice people, very nice people, don't know what in the hell they're doing. The only one that answered me, and I don't know his name, was a man right there, a young man sat, a fellow sat right there, and he asked me, how would I, how would I notify people that they could change? Other than that, I talked with a lady here, and the guy that stays back here, he, he seemed to orchestrate the majority of the meeting. Might be wrong, that's the opinion I had, okay? But number one, Jones County does give that. Now let me say on this, on this going, going here, you guys are sitting here talking about what you should do, but I'm going to be one of the ones that's affected by it, as probably everybody else in here. Some people more than others are going to be affected by somebody who is not doing his job, or their job, okay? Got to be. I spent forty-five years in management in, in a, a industrial environment. If I'd have ever one time failed an audit, or at one time been over budget and not told them upfront why, not had all the reasons, it didn't matter if I had enough people, I'd be in soup line, because they don't put up with it. It sounds to me like we're willing to make excuses as long as we can rectify it some kind of way. You'll never solve your problem till you deal with your problem, whatever that is, you, till you, till you deal with your problem, as long as you try to back up and be nice and be political, sometime, and I know you're political, but sometimes you got to throw the political out the window. There's a lot of people who build, build businesses in Jones County, a lot of people. How do you think they feel when they hear that we're going to lose all this money, possibly, I'm, I'm not real familiar, but how do you think they feel? Do you think they're, they got the warm fuzzies about coming to Jones County? No. No. Jones County could use some more business. Taxpayers in Jones County can't continue to fund, and you sit there and said, we got to go up thirty percent in taxes, I don't, or maybe property value. I'm not arguing my property value, I, I don't, I don't know. But I'm just saying, you got some old-time folks in Jones County who can't pay their taxes. And you can sit there and talk about it if you want to, but that, that is the facts. You're going to have a revolt. People are going to say enough is enough. It, I, I've been looking for that for a while. Now, I moved to Jones County because I love Jones County, okay? I want to see it succeed. I, I, I love living where I live. I live in the middle of the woods and wouldn't want it any other way. But I also know a lot of people who are retired, not really retired, they're just too old can't do it anymore, farming. And I hear them when they talk about, don't know how they're going to pay taxes, don't know how they're going to rake it together and scrape it together, and, and, and then for, for, you just, you, you got to, you got to understand, it's real to some people. It's not, you, you didn't do his job, or he didn't do his job. But if the state came here, which I think I heard, the state came here and said, this is the numbers you use, and he, we didn't use them numbers, then everybody ought to be fired, and, everybody, start over.
I appreciate it, I'm just trying to draw, you know.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any closing comments or thoughts or ideas of where we go from here?
I will say this, and it's kind of on the other business side of it, not on the number side of it. I think that we sat here last year, and we found out that there was a appeals, and we found out about it because the superintendent was invited, not us, correct?
No.
We didn't know about it until after the meeting had even occurred. Who signs his paycheck?
Robin.
Right. And we didn't get the invite to come to an appeal. You know, the first thing in any business is chain of command. And where I work at, that's, you go through your chain of command. Why was the superintendent of the school his first reach out to instead of the board of commissioners? That's just, you know, that's on that business side of it.
Well, I think, you know, not to argue that, but I mean, two taxing agencies, e, either one of them can do it. And I think the board, that school board probably requested it, but the fact that we were not notified or anything else until after we found out about the appeal process, that brings me to one of my comments, what are we doing now? Are we, obviously, we're going to appeal this one. Obviously, we need to know what our next steps are in the process. So for me, going forward, I, I'm still, I'm, I'm scorched earth at this point, I'm, I'm done. But in an effort to move forward, in an effort to figure out what our next steps are, I want to know where we are and where we're going. Where we are, meaning, why do we have all these overrides? Why do, I mean, what are they, and why do we have them? And how are we planning to clear those up? What is the board of assessors going to do with the tax ass, chief appraiser? And what is the chief appraiser going to do with staff and the process to get us out of the mess we're in right now? And based on those answers, I'm, if, if they're not a way to get us out of it right now, then I'm still ready to ask for all resignations and start over. Because in my opinion, we're not going to do anything worse than we're, than we're doing right now. Because we're fixing to be fined, we're fixing to be out of state compliance and everything else. So if, what, that's my question is, what is our game plan? Because right now, we have no control over that tax assessor's office, other than to remove the board. I, while I don't have confidence in where we're at, I don't think the solution tonight is removing the board, even though I'm ready for that, I don't think that's the answer because it's not going to fix the root of the problem, which is either leadership or process. And we need to know what that is. We don't have, we don't have our chief appraiser here tonight to give us any answers. That was one of the reasons I was at, wondering if the board was going to address any of these issues or what, what their plans are. And if the answer is, I don't know, then.
Tony's on the phone.
Okay. Has, has he got answers or, or responses?
Tony, can you hear us?
Come on, Kim, come on, Kim. Moving closer to us, a microphone or something, Justin, yeah, so they can hear him on the speaker.
Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody else can hear him on the speakers and on the recording.
All right, we can hear you.
All right, okay. Good evening, commissioners. Let me first begin by saying, I heard what you had to say tonight, and let me address some of that. First of all, this is a 2023 preliminary census ratio study, even though it was printed, it is not the final ratio study, okay? I was dismayed and concerned about the number when I saw it also, okay? But I'm an analytical person, so the first thing I do is do a deep dive into maybe how they came to this number, okay? Now, you don't know this, but I used to do racial studies for state agencies in the course of my career, so I know a little bit about this, all right? If you look at the sales that are in this study, okay? There are residential sales, let's start there, there are sixty. There are sixty-two percent of them under thirty-six percent. All right? And they are for twenty-twenty-three. If you look at the racial study, these sales, at the sale date of twenty-twenty-three. That's the first problem. The first problem, because we are taught to look at sales that occur in twenty-twenty-two for twenty-twenty-three. We don't have the luxury to pull sales from the current year. But the DOA is doing that. Okay? And let me put something else in context. The racial study is the relationship between the sales value and the sale price. Okay? Let me give you an example that's on here. Sales value of a property is one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-five. Times forty percent, will be fifty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-two. Well, that house sold in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, let's see. It sold... It sold in, um... Oh, gee. One, two, three. It sold in, uh, October of twenty-twenty-three for two hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay? Almost a hundred thousand dollars over our assessment. Okay? We don't control what someone pays for a piece of property. Now, people have been paying, overpaying for property in the last two and a half years here in Jones County. Okay? So that's an issue right there of people overpaying for property, which gives us a twenty-four percent ratio. Okay? Now, let me put things in context about the racial study. Okay? In twenty-twenty-one, after COVID, we saw an uptick in, um, certain areas of the county, and we addressed those areas where the rest of the county was flat. Okay? Which came to thirty-six million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred twenty dollars. An additional new assessment for twenty-twenty-one for twenty-twenty-two. We're always working a year behind. Okay? So let me address that. The things that, the changes that were made for twenty-twenty-four are not in this study. They will be analyzed for twenty-twenty-five. That's how it works. Okay? So the ratio dropped, okay, for twenty-twenty-two. We recognize that. Now, there's only one way to get your ratio up, is that is to raise values. That's it. That's the secret formula, to raise values. Close it to what properties are selling for or over selling for. And those are for the properties that have sold and the properties that haven't sold and the properties that haven't been renovated. Okay? That is the only way to get that ratio up. So we realize that. Okay? So for twenty-twenty-two for twenty-twenty-three, we addressed other subdivisions that hadn't been, uh, touched, and we quadrupled, I'll say it again, we quadrupled, okay, the new assessments for twenty-twenty-two for twenty-twenty-three in this study. Okay? It went from thirty-six million, seven eighty-one, five twenty to a hundred thirty-nine million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight twenty-five. Okay? Because we realized that we have to raise values and address properties that haven't been touched. That's the ninety-four-hundred-dollar change. Ninety-four-hundred changes was in twenty-twenty-three, not this year. Okay? So we realized that. Now, I had a conversation with our DOA rep, maybe late twenty-four, I mean, early twenty-four, late twenty-three. And I was in the middle of doing five different other things. As I'm usually doing, and he called and said, how's the, you know, how's the assessments going for twenty-twenty-three? I said, great, we addressed it, you know, we realized that the market is up. Okay? And we need to address that. We made ninety-four-hundred changes for a hundred thirty-nine million dollars. That's quadrupled what we did the year before. And he didn't say to me, I can't see that. Okay? And it didn't dawn on me at the time, because I thought DOA can see all, uh, changes that we made. Well, he was telling me he can't see that, meaning he can't see, those changes were done manually, ninety-four-hundred. Okay? They were done manually for a hundred thirty-nine million dollars. He couldn't see that. So he didn't dawn on me until now with the ratio that he or his team thinks that we haven't addressed the higher market values of properties here in Jones County. Okay? That's what I believe has happened with this study. That he hasn't, he hasn't seen the ninety-four-hundred changes that we made because they were done manually and not done systematically across the board like we did this year. Okay? So I believe they are thinking that we have sat on our hands for the past year and done nothing. And that's not the case. That's not the case at all. Okay? And this year, we doubled what we did last year. Okay? With the across-the-board change. Okay? That's the only way to address the whole ratio. But understand that we don't control what someone is willing to pay for a property. If people are going to pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars more than what we had the property on the books for, that's their right. That's their right. Okay? And unfortunately, you have enough of those in a subdivision, a, a neighborhood, an area, everybody has to grow up a percentage. Okay? Because that is telling us that the market value for those other homes, even though they're not for sale or haven't been renovated, values have to go up. That is the only way you change the ratio. But you have to understand that people are overpaying the last two and a half, three years here in Jones County for properties that we have no control of. We follow the market. We don't create the market. Now, if I do a deep dive into these numbers that are here, here's what it says. It says the residential sales in this study are sixty-two percent under thirty-six percent. Well, I had a third party who developed our wing out, uh, computer system, give me some stats, because he can go in and get them and see things back where I couldn't. And there were seven hundred residential sales in twenty-twenty-three. The ratio for under thirty-six percent is only thirty-three point seven percent. Okay? They used sixty-two percent in this study. That doesn't correlate, that doesn't match. Okay? And culturally, they said that there were fifteen sales. All right? Well, ten over are under twenty-seven, are only twenty-seven point oh-two percent. We have nine sales at twenty-four percent, and eighteen sales, I'll say eighteen sales, at forty-eight point sixty-four percent. Okay? The numbers in this study don't add up to what it really is. Okay? Commercial. There were seventeen commercial sales in twenty-twenty-three. Okay? I used ten over in this, in this, uh, study. I know this page. The ratio is thirty-nine point nine-nine based on the sales that they put on this preliminary sales ratio. Not thirty-one. Not thirty-one seventy-one. It's thirty-nine point nine-nine. Not thirty-one. So the numbers don't lie. Okay? The numbers don't lie here. So we have worked hard and addressed the inequities and addressed the situation. That's why we could quadrupled the new assessments for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Okay? So these numbers don't drive with the stats. That's in black and white. So I'm, yeah, I, I, I'm here at the National Assessors, uh, conference, and there are about five other chief appraisers here from Georgia. I asked them, they got their, picked their brain. What do you think this is? They said, I mean, you just have to appeal. You just have to have an appeal done, okay? Based on the stats that you had and the ninety-four-hundred changes that you made for twenty-twenty-three and show them. I had a ninety-four-hundred changes in paper, in black and white paper to hand them. Okay? And they said to me, the other chief appraiser, there's no way your, 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 um, ratio should have went down if you did that. And I said, yeah, I didn't think so either. So they said, appeal, just have an appeal. Now, there are two parts to this appeal. Okay? There is appeal with the Department of Odison accounts. Okay? Um, you showed them what you had, you showed them the racial study that you did, you showed them the changes that you made. Now, I've heard that changes that you made pulls the needle with them. Okay? Pulls the needle. So that is something that... And then the second part of the appeal, if you don't get the desired result, is you go to arbitration. Arbitration consists of this. It consists of us choosing a chief appraiser. It's you, it, it has the Department of Odison accounts choosing the chief appraiser, and then we agree, the Department of Odison accounts and us agree on the chief appraiser together. And those three people are the arbitration board. Okay? And I spoke to a chief appraiser who was a parent of arbitration board. And he told me, that's where you're going to see the most of the needle move. Okay? Based on the information that you provide. Okay? Now, let me address last year's, uh, notice. Department of Odison accounts sent out a notice. I could send out the notice of what the hearing was. They sent the notice out, it went to Chris Wyler, and it went to Chase and Chris. Now, I don't wanna be accused of not letting you all know about what the hearing was. I didn't send the notice, it came from DOA and it's CC with two of you. Okay? Let's straighten that out. Correct? But the only way to increase this ratio right now is to appeal it with information out there, you send there, because if he didn't see ninety-four-hundred changes, and you didn't see the new evaluations that we addressed, well, this ratio represents us basically sitting on our hands and doing nothing in twenty-twenty-three. That's what it represents. It doesn't represent us quadrupling the new assessments. So it's obvious that they didn't see that. But the information in this study, preliminary, remember that, it's a preliminary study, even though it's been typed up. It's a preliminary study, it's not a final study. That these stats that are been given from a third party, okay, who developed our wing out system, tell me that they used an exceptional amount of sales again under sixty-two percent. Now, you can make a racial study look any way you want to. I wanted to tell you that. You can make a racial study look any way you want to by the sales that, or the samples that you bought. Okay? That's the first thing. Correct? Now, to address the override situation, there are a variety of reasons why people let overrides off. The condition on properties may, uh, be a year or two in the making, uh, be a weakness since, uh, overrides, settlements of appeals to get to a certain number based on the condition of a property. Okay? We don't just go out and willy-nilly put overrides on people's properties. That's not what we do. Now, the property in question, okay, that you've been talking about, okay? Here's what happened. So you know, twenty-twenty-two, a former employee who retired, was retired, clicked on this individual's parcel in August. They took the sketch. Okay? They got an assessment notice sent to them in May like everyone else. But August, this woman, Lori, took down the sketch. So, I'm clicking him, clicking on the sketch, adding another section to the parcel to increase the value. So the taxpayer found out about this and saw it and brought it to our kitchen. But we wanted to see, oh, what happened? Because it was in August. They can change the values in August unless it's an appeal. Okay? That was a computer glitch, okay? We overwhelmed the value back down to where it was before. Okay? That's what happened on that parcel. Yes. That came out this year. It's already been taken off for twenty-twenty-five. Okay? The taxpayer has five or six other properties that didn't have an issue, that they went up like everyone else. The changes we made from twenty-twenty-four for this year across the board was a twenty-two percent increase. It winds up being a twelve to eighteen percent increase after depreciation on properties. Okay? We thought that that was a fair increase. We don't wanna tax people or value people out of their homes. Okay? But we had to do that to get our ratio up. Said, properties are selling for a hundred and... Sales properties are selling for a hundred and ten dollars to a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot. That is the market price. We left forty-eight to sixty. We're going to gradually get there because we can go from, from that year from sixty to a hundred, or sixty to ninety. Okay? But, that's going to bring other issues, other problems with taxpayers. Okay? Because little Miss Smith, who's on a fixed income in her seventies, may not be able to afford that increase all at once. You can roll back the rate, the school's got to roll back the rate, and if it's in the city of Gray, the city of Gray's got to roll back the rate. But there's three things we can do every year. There's only three. One is do nothing. We're not going to do that because the market is up, that means our assessments have to go up. We can go zero to forty percent. Okay, we can do that. Or, we can gradually get there. And so, we aren't pricing people out of their homes where the seniors here in Gray, gathered in Jones County, will still be able to stay in their house and afford their taxes. So, there's only three, three ways to do this. There's not fifteen other ways. Okay, so, we've been responsible, we've done this with integrity, okay? And we kept the taxpayers in mind by the increases that we put on here. Okay, but this racial, preliminary racial study? I'm ready to appeal this because this doesn't make any sense. Not based on a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars in new assessments from the previous year. That makes no sense. So, that tells me, based on that conversation I had with that DOA rep, who's only been a DOA rep for us for two and a half years, that when he said he couldn't see the changes, I was under the impression they could see all the changes. But I can see, this ratio represents that they look at it and say, well, Jones County didn't do anything. But it's not the case. Okay? Now, as far as staffing, yeah. We probably need, uh, two other people, at least three other people. But that's a challenge in itself, okay? Because it takes two to four years to train somebody to do this properly. We don't get two, two retirements unexpectedly, but they expect each other. That's everybody's experience, okay? They're not going to cry about it, we're going to pick it, and we're going to do things a little bit differently to get the job done. And that's what we did. That's what we did. I stand up for my staff anytime, any day. Okay? Because all we do is get our finger pointed at us, but no one's going to say that we ain't doing our job because we are. Because we are. And if we only had a hundred and seventy appeals this year, it shows us that, you know, we might be doing things pretty well. All right, but we have to get there gradually. If you want us to put a forty percent increase on somebody, we can justify it. If you want that, we can do it, that's not a problem. But you're going to take a lot of grief for it. We're going to take a lot of grief for it. And like I said, I know what's going to happen. I'm going to have little Miss Smith come into our office and say she can't afford this anymore. You know, she's going to lose her home. That's what's going to happen. So, to get there gradually is a smart way to do it. Okay, but this racial study, nah, I, I, I'm not accepting this. I used to do this. Now, I'm looking at it, and the numbers don't add up to me. So, yeah, I would like to appeal it, and then if we don't get the exact satisfaction we want, yes, I would like to go to arbitration. And yes, commissioner kitchens, I would want legal representative there too. Okay? But I also will have other representation of other experts that I know can support us in getting the desired result that we want. I was told, well, arbitration is pretty normal in this process. It's not some adoration, it's pretty normal. Okay? But I've never had to appeal a, a, a ratio before. So, now, I want to have the expertise and the knowledge of people who have had and been in arbitration, uh, hearing, to inform me exactly how it would be. Now, I meet with you every year, and I try to inform the board commissioners on where we're going, where the new, new assessments are coming from. Okay? I come every year because you should know. I'm not hiding in my office, not giving you the information. But you can have it both ways. We're doing the work.
Chairman, I've heard about all I can hear of this. Tony, with all due respect, you can't sit here and say that you don't, that you do your job when the, and the numbers don't lie, and that the state was wrong last year, the state's wrong this year, it's always their fault, and a guy told you he didn't see one word, you, one minute you said you could see, that they could see things you couldn't see from the state level. The next minute you tell us the DOAA didn't see any of the changes we made, we quadrupled the ratio, but yet we went down. When you say you aren't doing your job, and you come in here every year and tell us what a great job you're doing, you're right, you tell us what a great job you're doing. I'm not finished, I'm not finished, Tony, I'm not finished at all. You can't sit there and tell us you're doing your job every year and how great it is, and last year you told us the state made a mistake. This year you saying the state made a worse mistake. What I want right now is that DOA representative and your wing gap representative in front of this board telling us how in the world they could miss a quadrupled, a quadrupled increase in assessment, and we go down one point four percent in our sales ratio study. I don't care if it's preliminary or not, these are the numbers we got from the state. And we're not going by any other body, anybody else's requirement except the state. Not by people you know, not by professional, not by legal representation, it's the state requirements that we have to go by, and that's who I want to hear talk to me about it. You have given us nothing but excuses, not the first solution.
This board would like to move this to the next meeting.
I can give you a solution, a solution.
Yeah, right, the same one you gave us this year. Raise the taxes and then tell everybody you need to go talk to the commissioners to lower, to remove the mileage rate back. That was your reasoning.
It's the relationship between sales and our assessments. That's what this ratio says.
Tony?
That's what it's about.
Tony. Set, parcel number one, I'm going to call them one, two, and three. Parcel number one, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, did not sell. Since twenty-twenty has been two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The house right next door to it, did not sell. Went from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, rough numbers. The house across the seat, street, sells in twenty-twenty-three for four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four, the, the ratio goes up from two to fifty to three-eighty-five. You tell me that's consistency, that's uni, universal, that everything's on the up and up. That's three houses across the street from each other. And if we don't know that until it comes out in the report, shame on all of us.
Yes, Chairman, I would, I would move, we, uh, move this to the next, to a work session or another, because we're not getting anywhere.
Did I say something? If we can, we'll have a... Tim, you want to say something right quick?
I just want to say, thank you for, uh... Thank, first of all, let me thank you for appointing me, asking me to serve on the board. And I found it quite rewarding to do that. I don't know how familiar you are in order to qualify to be on that board. I heard a lot of words turn, thrown around incompetency and things of that nature. However, to be on this board of tax assessors, you must comply with the state Department of Revenue requirements, which involves training, and you must pass a test. So, in September last year, took a five, four-day class, eight hours a day, and a test, and you have to pass that test, and not open book, is, you got to calculate it. But on the other hand, I'm not an appraiser. That's not my job, I don't have any desire. But you're there to understand the process. Uh, and in doing that, I have come familiar with the process. And, uh, I've got a copy of the sales ratio, and I've got, I keep a book, and I understand what's involved in the appraisal process. And there's about ten bullets that you must entertain when doing an appraisal. So, I just want to make sure the board understands when there are terms being thrown around about incompetency, failure to do whatever, whatever. Then, again, I, I don't, I don't consider myself incompetent, and I don't consider, uh, the fellow board members incompetent. They're a lot more knowledgeable than I am because they've served a lot longer. Uh, but again, getting to the sales ratio, I've, I've got a copy of that report. And I talked to a, a county, uh, tax assessor and, uh, a chief appraiser. And that forty-seven counties on this one-to-fifty-nine county report that fell below the, uh, desirable, uh, ratio requirement. So, and I don't know how it happened, but I can tell you my own personal thing. Property, uh, my family bought last year, end of last year, it was priced at six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. We paid nine-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars for it. And you figured that out, because you know why we bought it, because we wanted it. A lot of people in Jones County are not buying property that flip. They're buying property because they want it, and they pay for it if they can afford it. It's a unique market. And I'm a example of that unique market. People live a mile off the road. It's not going to be marketable property, but that's what they want, and that's what they're investing in. So, I just want to make sure we clear and make sure where I am, and I'm not speaking for the board members that are here, but I think they are, you know, diligent, they, they, they attend all meetings, and we look for the, uh, chief appraiser as well as the staff to inform us of what's required. And we go to training to understand more about what our job duties are. So, with that, I hope, uh, with that, there's some understanding.
Okay.
Mr. Andrews, I thank you because I was personally asked you if you would be, you know, considered on this board, I thank you. And, uh, I, I think we need to have a work session at the next.
Chairman, incompetency of a board does not reflect one member because one member can't make a difference. It takes three votes.
Three votes.
So, the incompetency is in the, the three votes of a board. So, that's why I did not, I didn't say any person was incompetent.
If we can, we'll, we'll, we'll continue this on the, uh, next meeting, which be the second. We need to motion table this to the, postpone this to the next meeting, uh, starting with a five o'clock work session, if we may. And it being on the agenda for any, uh, any actions, if any.
Motion to postpone item number one, Chairman, to the next work session at five P.M.
Second. Second, any discussion?
Yeah. At, at this meeting, are you going to have somebody from the state present, somebody from wing gap present? Because I don't want to meet if we're just going to do this again.
Right, I would, I would ask that, um, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask the board to ask the tax assessor, or we ask tax assessor to get those two people that he mentioned that say these are not where they should be, that, that they would come speak to us on that. And also, I'd like to know, uh, just what, the information that we asked for before on the, uh, overrides, whether overrides, some of them are valid, but I, I think we're above where our percentage should be for value.
Right, I understand when, you know, BOE makes a decision, it holds value for X number of time, usually three years it'll hold a value. But I'm just, I don't think there's been that many BOE hearings to equal that percentage. So, I'd like to see a full list, and if it has a reason, put the reason.
Work session for, second, all right, thank, all pay Brian? I thank you, all right, we can move on with FY twenty-five budget approval. Mr. Rissner, I understand, uh, Mr. Trumpfield, uh, boy, he's doing very well.
Happy birthday, by the way.
This is her birthday present. We're not going to sing to you, then, Luvita.
I'll sing afterwards.
So, I got a couple of responses back in terms of, um, selecting which proj, projects to, to move forward with and, um, and which ones not to. Um, and so, I, I think probably the next step, uh, towards budget adoption is kind of talking through, uh, those projects and seeing which ones the, the board is inclined to, inclined to fund. Just, uh, you know, one, we, we started off with a number of seven-hundred thousand, uh, as, as the funds to allocate. I don't know if, kind of as we, as we work through this, um, tax digest thing, if we need to hold money aside, um, for a potential, for a penalty. I know there's been some talk about that, um, and talk about, uh, utility, uh, property tax revenue that we may have to forego. Um, I, I don't know how likely all of that is or, or isn't, um, but that's just something to, to keep in mind. If, if the board is inclined to kind of hold some aside, you know, maybe it's not seven-hundred thousand, you got to work with, um, maybe some lower number. But just wanted to throw that out there, um, as, as something to think about. With all that said, I guess...
I'm sorry, real quick. The utility money, is that realistic in terms of a loss?
I, I think what I understand is that we had to collect at a lower percentage this year, and would have to do the same for the, for the coming collection. What the, what that amounts to in terms of dollars, I don't, I don't have a feel for that.
Do you know, Luvita?
Do we also have the loss? Because we're a year behind. So, twenty-twenty-two, we were below thirty-six percent. Yeah, and then twenty-three, if we're looking at twenty-three now, we can assume twenty-four. But twenty-two and twenty-three, and from what I understand, once you get thir, below thirty-six percent, you're collecting at that percentage, not at the forty.
I, I, that's my understanding, is so that, so that last year, um, we may have been collecting utilities at the thirty-two point whatever percent rate as opposed to the, the full amount.
And this year would be thirty-one point four if we don't, if this preliminary sales sta, study, sales ratio sticks.
Right.
Not forty percent. That's what I understand.
How many did you get turned in? I know I turned in one.
I've, I've gotten, uh, yours and Commissioner Bowden's.
Okay, so, I mean, mine, mine, if they would add with the remaining, uh, because I think I had some leftover. I would say use it in contingency just to, to have.
I'm just going to give you my laptop, Jason, because I can't say.
I'm sorry.
I said, I'm just going to give Jason my laptop because I can't get it to, uh, send to him.
Well, I found, I had to write my numbers down and email it to him, I couldn't get it to save and send.
I was on the beach and I ended up, couldn't get it opened up, so I just texted. I had my, actually got my worksheet right here, so.
I know you got some sun.
Yeah, I got, my wife's birthday wish was go to the beach, you know. Luvita said, what's wrong with your face? She got her birthday wish, I sit three days on the beach.
She makes the sweetest comments, don't she?
What's wrong with your face?
What's wrong with your face?
I got all this sun sitting under a tent.
Can I make a comment real quick? Uh, number three on animal services, the body cameras, I know that's a, a pretty small request of eight-hundred dollars in comparison to some of the items on this list, but from the prosecutor's point of view for the county, that would be a tremendous help. But from the prosecutor's point of view for the county, that would be a tremendous help.
We talked about that the other day, and I don't know if that's a qualified, I don't know if we're spending enough. That might be too little money for a quality camera. For a duration, if a service officer is out on the field for an hour, is it going to last that long? I just, we might be better off going with the same quality durability item as the sheriff's office uses. That way, it's interchangeable.
And, and that would be fine, but it would be very helpful because those tickets are usually hotly contested.
Right. Right. So it's a needed item. It's just, I want to make sure we have a quality.
Yes.
Product for our people to use.
I'm in the 40s.
Y'all should have been over when Tony started talking. There are some people that are like that. And there's some people who weren't allowed to talk when they were little. You just let them run their mouth, and that's what they need to do.
My report calls from kindergarten on. Oh, we say, "Oh."
I'd love to see you as a little girl. You must have been some kind of spunky.
I was a tomboy that loved my baby dolls because everybody that lived around me was boys. And my grandma took me home. She had one eye, her momma had. My mama Jew. She taught me how to, my Kate was one of those, but you can't break them. She taught me how to rig it with a coat hanger. As the throttle, because my throttle cable kept breaking. And then we made. We made a seat going to the top of the nose. So she'd sit down like this and hold on to my seat. Because I drove my dog.
It's all right.
And you know, there's so many things. That have done with Raymond. Yet for an age, because I can remember them as with my grandma. When Raymond first got brought to into our family. One night she was sitting in the lab and she started. Playing with me right there. I did that in my mama jewel on my wife.
Do I know?
She never had mama jewel.
Genetically.
And it was just like, what are you doing? And she says, it's just the whole thing. And that's what I used to say to my grandma. You know, I used to, yeah, just play with it.
I got it tallied up.
Everybody make sure you got your microphones on. We're good? All right, so, yeah, we've been recording. All right. All right, so I tallied up everything here. We have, uh, nothing got all five. Uh, no, no items had all five. Uh, but I'll go down the list. We had some fours. All right, number two, the animal services sign. Animal Services body cams have four.
Did the sign have four?
Yes, the sign.
Okay, so.
Body cams. The elections, privacy filters.
Call out the number, Jason, if you will.
Oh, number 12.
Okay.
Elections, privacy filters. Number 16, IT enhanced security.
Which set of pages?
All right, number 45, the senior center regional events. Number 47, the sheriff's office shift differential. Number 54, the. You know, one, the back home update and then relocating the antennas from the Georgia forestry tower. That's number 54. Number 56, spirit court clerk. Create chief deputy position reclass current employee. Okay, and that's everything with fours. All right, and then. Three. Threes. We had number one, the animal services laptop. And one clarification on that. Just after further discussion with, with the department head, all we need is the mount for the laptop. I think they had the laptop. So really, all we're talking is like a thousand dollars. So number one. Number five, repair the exterior of station three. Number eight.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
Number five, repaint the exterior of station three. Number eight, which is repaint interior of courthouse. Number nine, which is county extension 4H. Increase part-time program assistant physician wage. Number 10, 4H, establish the youth programs line item. Number 21, parts and wreck pickleball courts. On some of those, I scored the, the water projects and some I didn't. We can, we can, uh, or the board can decide on those separately. So those are all the threes, 1, 5, 8, 9, 10, and 21. Do you want me to go any deeper than that?
How much money we got left?
Uh, all right, I can, I can go through.
I mean, that's the biggest question, Ed, we got so far, what we went through. Make sure you're on the spot.
No, okay.
Well, I couldn't get mine under 700, so. It was pretty hard there for me. And that was trying to be fair and do something for everybody.
I didn't even look at that. I didn't even look at that. I looked at priority and, and biggest need, in my opinion.
Okay, we have.
Four eighty-nine, five fifty-four.
Four. Yeah, four ninety-five.
Look at you.
All right, twos. We have. Number 11, county extension, increase administrative assistant county contribution. Parks and Rec splash pad. We have the Parks and Rec tractor and attachments.
Which one's the splash pad, uh, 20?
Nineteen.
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 What's the one you said after splash pad?
The Parks and Rec tractor.
So, hold on.
Okay.
Because that was 480.
Yeah, I mean, the splash pad's gonna pretty much.
Yep.
Take it all. You want to mention all the other ones except for the splash pad, all the other twos?
Public Works, so number 31A, Public Works lease option on the wheel loader. That too. Public Works sanitation, large roll-off container, number 41. Number 48, sheriff's office replaced two part-time positions with one full-time. Number 52, sheriff's office concrete pad replacement. Number 57, spirit court clerk create civil deputy position. And that was it for general fund.
So first, I don't think we can go down the list of twos and say the first three that we came with are, you know, makes it off, so. And we're going to discuss. So do we go back and look at the twos and, and all vote again for the two, the two twos or?
However, y'all want to do it.
Well, I, I do want to make one comment and that. And I know this is going to sound, Sam kitchens don't want a splash pad and Sam kitchens don't want pickleball courts. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this regardless of who likes it or don't like it. Because I'm just in that kind of.
Is this a bias that you're gonna put out on the floor?
Yep. It's not a bias, it's a fact. All the fours and all the threes are based on the department's priority ranking, ones and twos. Except for the splash pad and the pickleball courts. So, let me look at.
I don't know, the splash, the pickleball court got three votes there, so.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the priority level of the, of the department.
Uh huh.
So we went, based on their top priority, what the department heads recommended was their top priority. All the other fours and threes that we voted on, that was based on their top, top priority matched with our top priority. I'm just saying that we got three votes on one that was, which number was that?
That was our top priority.
I agree. I just. I just wanted to be known that it was not the department's top priority. And their top priority was the tractor and attachments. Which may or may not even make it in the two. And we talked about originally finishing what we started. We, we don't even have a tractor to maintain the fields that we got.
Aw, man.
But we gonna put a, we gonna put more pickleball courts in. I'm a thousand percent voting for the pickleball court. But we need to find a way to, to, uh, build. We're asking other people on the, uh, on the, uh, what do we call it, the, the?
Oh, skate park.
Skate park.
Yeah.
Sam, we can't have it both ways.
Come to us with some, uh, funding sources, maybe, you know, sponsorship, stuff like that. We can have it both ways. We can ask them all to bring a little.
I want to see this proverbial list that we've never done. Because if that's the case, then we shouldn't open this up. We should just do what's on the list.
Preferbial list, what?
The proverbial list of unfinished business, right? We should never open this up. We should just finish what's on that project list. Because here we are, doing some other stuff. And now, we're talking about a pickleball court.
No, I'm not talking about unfinished. I'm talking about, the department has says their number one priority is we do not have a tractor to maintain the football and baseball fields that we currently operate for youth sports.
I'm saying.
And we're not gonna fund that tractor.
I'm saying.
But we're gonna add a pickleball court that we, that brings no.
That have not been done in this county. And we did this. We should have never done this. We should just go down that list of what's on the county's project list and just finish those. That's what I mean when you can't have it both ways.
Well, I agree. I agree with that. But I will agree that we have pickleball courts that we changed the tennis court into pickleball courts.
Yes.
Phenomenal. Blew it out of the park. We have people using that that I would say is the best use of, of, of a facility that we've built to date. We're always gonna have football and we're gonna have baseball because that's a, a every year thing. But pickleball has blown it out of the park.
Amen.
Which means, why can't, we, if we got that much publicity tour, why can't we find sponsors or people that will help fund that pickleball court? Or, we start, um, maybe there's, there's a cost to it. I don't know of a pickleball courts that are. That are that big that, uh, I ain't voting for a splash pad, I can tell you that. I'll say that in front of God and everybody, I ain't voting for a splash pad.
I'm with you. I've heard so many headaches on that thing, you're hungry.
I'll honestly say that all the way around.
Pickleball to settle, so we're gonna move on to the other thing.
Pickleball to settle.
Splash pad, yeah, everybody, you, you go to these conferences, don't do a splash pad. Or water park, anything like that. It's like, you, you, you know, don't do it.
All right, so.
Do you want to hear numbers real quick?
We have 200 and.
So if I added all number twos, except no splash pad, and then the other two largest one was the wheel loader. If I kept those two off and all other number twos, it's at 665-961. But 31, wheel loader, that was their number one priority. If you don't do the purchase price, but you do the 41, 177, which is 31A.
Uh huh.
You with me?
Yep.
So still leaving off the splash pad, if you did 31A instead of 31, you would have all four threes and twos for 707-138.
With the splash pad?
No. That's everything but the splash pad.
And the two gets the tractor and.
Yes, that gets the tractor and it gets the lease option for the wheel loader.
Are we gonna let go of the splash pad for all of those things?
And that's. The tractor, that's number 22, which is, looks like the purchase, not the lease.
All right, that's where I'm at.
All right, so you're saying if I go out and I get some corporate sponsors to help build a splash pad, you're gonna be okay with it?
No, you need to be getting them for the pickleball courts.
No.
We got the pickleball courts.
I know it. At the expense of all these top priorities from other departments. Let's see. Which one do we miss? I'm, look, I'm only got one vote. Y'all got three votes. You got three, you got three on there. Y'all got, y'all got the pickleball courts.
So, we're gonna go with that option there?
Yes.
They didn't get either one of their number ones.
Who?
Fire, EMA didn't get their number one.
So sad.
Okay, so y'all. So number twos, we want to add.
Y'all got it, y'all confused us. No, we're good.
I like numbers, so. So every number four, number three, and number two, except the splash pad.
Just want it to be known that I voted for the splash pad.
On the wheel loader, it's 31A, not 31. Puts you at 707-138.
I want it to be known that I'm not voting for a splash pad. Anybody has a problem, call me and I'll tell them about the maintenance issues and the problems you have putting one in. Because I've put in probably, what, six, seven of them? And you don't know how many of them are running right now?
Which ones run? Is that the one that he's making?
No, that's the one over by the hospital. I mean, the last time I went by it, it was.
I mean, we could just do a sprinkler out there.
Oh, we can do a sprinkler all day long. Let the sun hose up. You can do that at your house.
Just move a sprinkler around, let the kids play until he's money and go to the next spot.
You're all the terrible.
You got your splash pad.
I got grandkids that would love a splash pad, but.
Yeah.
We can't afford it as a county.
I've done the horror stories too many times.
Oh, yeah. We need a splash pad, but it needs to look like splash number.
Yeah, with a stage and.
Yeah.
So are we not funding Keep Jones Beautiful?
So on Keep Jones Beautiful.
A day ticket, oh, I'm sorry.
There is, uh, there's an amount still in the budget. And it's what we've traditionally had in there. So when, uh, when the board decided to go with the contract arrangement with Chamber of Commerce, monies were just moved from various line items into two line items. And I think one of them was, uh, yeah, operating. And then one of them was like a landscaping line item. So there was the money for the salaries in one line item, money for beautification activities in the other. So, so that money's in the budget now. So at some point, you know, y'all, y'all have an opportunity to reconsider another contract with them or doing it some, some other way. So, now if, if you were inclined to completely pull that money out of the budget, you would have another $40,000 to, to work with. But, but that's the way it stands right now, is there's still.
So that was just additional money.
Now, this would have been the, we, we, we probably shouldn't have put it on this list, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, it's already in there, so.
You'll include the $2,000 we saving in animal services by not needing the laptop, just.
Well, John said, though, that, that the camera's gonna make up the difference.
I think get with the sheriff and see what they use and have something that, that will sink or whatever we need to do to.
You know, picture's worth a thousand words and a settlement in our favor when we go to court with a body cam.
So, we have all of our fours, our threes, our twos.
All twos except the splash pad.
Harry, Levita wants to say something.
I come to 707 when I do that.
It's 707-138.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Crutchfield.
Uh, my question is, um, getting back to if we get fined by the state, where do you want those fines to come from?
Wendy doesn't get her pickleball.
Pardon me?
Contingency.
I guess contingency.
You're bending it now.
I'm sorry, reserve. I'm sorry, reserve.
Reserve, continue. We gotta reserve it, we have to.
But we don't know how much the fines may be for lost revenue.
We, we, we don't know, so the reality is that utility is how much? A million dollars?
Million or 1.2, and we're only getting a percentage of it.
Thirty-six percent of a million is 300,000, right? I mean, well, thirty.
No, I think it's a million in revenue.
But we're only gonna get, are we gonna get the 31% of the money?
I don't, I don't want to put a figure on it.
I think it's, would be 31 instead of 40, so really, you'd be getting three-quarters of the revenue that you would get otherwise. I think that's right.
Do we have to pay the $5 per person?
Don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
So tell me, where you paying it?
And I don't think, I, I think we're in our third year, so, one bad year, one appeal, third appeal.
We'll, we'll check into that for the next meeting, so we can kind of get clarification. We've got somebody we can call to kind of give us, it's been nice to work with us as far as, you know, where we're at. So maybe we can reach out to them and figure out exactly what we need to anticipate, any op, even, any more options we might have as a board.
Okay, the other things I was supposed to ask. So, the individual line item adjustments that I made kind of on that sheet in the, in the administration recommendation version of the budget, did anybody have any thoughts or heartburn or, or issues with any of those that we want to change? Or is everybody good with, with those?
I'm fine with that, because, I mean, y'all, y'all know this better than anybody, as far as, you know, your consistency's been good.
All right. Was there anything else that? Oh, yeah. And then I, I know when we did the Sheriff's Office items, Earl kind of went through a variety of different things there. Any, I didn't go through and change this blue list from what we had last time, so, you know, some of those things he was talking about are, you know, can kind of be covered in the operating budget. Maybe a few of them can't, or, so any, I, I don't have a list of those with me right now, but any thoughts on those, or any direction on what we should do with those? Honestly, wasn't sure how to handle that. With it. I didn't know if I would add all that stuff to the blue and, and further extend that list, or just leave it alone. I don't know. Any, any thoughts on, on that? All right. All right. Okay, just leave it alone. Do, what's that? That was the one about the line item adjustments, they said they were good with those. And then the penalty, and then the, yeah, so that was the three things. I think we got them all. What else do you?
You're good with the water department, because we had enough, all the requests in there, we got go.
So that's, yeah, so, is everybody good with funding all three of those out of the water? Do y'all want to go through those individually and figure that out?
We have funds available.
You do, that's right.
For his three water items?
Yes.
So he's got the money available for that, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I say go with.
Y'all good with that?
Yes.
Everyone's good with that, all three items on the water. Okay.
See, I wasted some of my votes on that.
No, he went back and took them out. He's taking all the votes.
Can that will change my number?
Yes.
707-138, because I don't have my calculator.
707-138, that's great.
And she's doing it on the phone, couldn't.
All right, so we gotta, we gotta put that number in the resolution, if we can take just a.
Second.
Just, just a quick break.
Got it.
Levita will bring back the resolution for y'all.
Jason, question on the operational budgets, I remember when we were going through those and we had the work session, there was the request, and we had a big discussion about them, and then we had staff recommendations. I made a lot of notes on mine, and then I didn't realize y'all had a recommendation out here. So then when I went back and looked at them, a lot of your recommendations were tied to hire, so.
Okay.
So the adoption is y'all's recommendation that we.
Yes, that's right.
Question on. We increased when we got the new director. Is that positioning a part of the 4% or was that a set salary?
It was, yeah, it was just like a, an additional amount that y'all kind of give to them to cover that salary, so.
But every year, it's part of the budget that we have to recover.
Yes, so that, that is, that is included in, in the budget as a, as a general fund line item, just sort of their, their standard allocation, including that, the salary.
You sure can.
Remember that?
Yes. Forest trade, you're going to double it? Yes, ma'am.
What, what are we doing, pickleball, at the top or the bottom of the, the bottom, that other lights are already at? That bit of recommendation? It's pretty close, already has lights on, it's already available. Probably the best place for it.
You have plenty of room to build splash pads on.
We need to start talking, we need, we need to start talking about tournament cost and, you know, rental of the facility daily fees versus team fees versus annual fees, you know, kind of like we do it on the pickleball courts.
Then you can put your capital projects in tomorrow.
Okay.
We subsed that golf course in there.
But you got the first page, and Shannon got the last.
Okay.
Let's do a reading.
This is your annual tradition.
I don't either.
I think I've been out there one time.
I've been out there one time, I've been about twice, and I was like, this is the dumbest thing. You gotta hit the ball and then go look for it. And I'm like, where'd he go? And then you get out there, and if you're not right on the path, there's like nine other golf balls out there, I'm like, I'm gonna make a stripe of mine every time. She gonna get a picture. Who's that?
Come on, Levita.
Come on.
We're gonna sing happy birthday if you don't.
Annual tradition.
Levita, get up here so we can go home. We don't have all our little ins and outs in our local performance, so we just gonna read the adoption, so we can all go home.
And sing happy birthday.
Levita, see if your microphone's on, so everybody can hear you. Push, push the button, see what it is. There it goes.
Jones County Board of Commissioners, this is for the fiscal year FY 2025. This is for, from 2024 to 2025, today is August 27, 2024. We've already adopted the millage, now we're here to adopt the budget. Whereas the county administrator of Jones County has prepared and submitted to the governing authority a millage rate computation based on proposed budget for the year beginning September 1, 2024, ending August 31, 2025, adopted on August 27, 2024. The expenditures will be. Expenditures will be, including our restricted items for revenue, 29,343,925.79. The following specific expenditures are authorized by this budget resolution or in included in the attached budget document. Funding for any other special request must be approved by the Board of Commissioners. The general fund budget includes the capital projects line of an item of 707,138 that the board has approved to be used for the following items that were approved tonight by the board, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Jones County, Georgia, that the following budgets, and I'll read those off, attached here to and made part of, therefore, for the year beginning September 1, 202024, ending August 31, 2025. We approve this date. We have all the special revenue funds, and all of the water funds. We'll have 31,860 for the law library, juvenile cost and fees, 12,465, confiscated, 31,725, E911, 884,196. Our drug education, 98,000, 98,795. Our jail, 45,384. Our SPOS that remains in the 202015, which should be coming to an end, is 1,082,542.17. Our ARPA fund, 2,00836,54277. Our obligation tax bond, 166,250. Our 2021 SPOS, available for 2025, 4,823,350. Our water fund, it will be 4,605,337. Our PFA revenue bond is 5,030,341.53. Our One Georgia Equity Fund, 500,000, and our chip grant was 400,000. I make a motion that our 2025, I ask for a motion that our 2025 budget be approved for fiscal year 2025.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any more discussions? We have two, almost three seconds. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Levita. Happy birthday to you. We love you. You know we had to do it, thank you, Levita. Any citizen comments tonight? Any board comments tonight? Any department head comments tonight? Okay.
I just want to reach out and pray for the family of Mr. Fred MacRoberts, who was a volunteer fireman that passed away this week unexpectedly. He had been a volunteer since 2009. Just have his family in our thoughts and prayers, and also Commissioner Kitchens is in our thoughts and prayers too, who lost his father this week.
Thank you, thank you.
I didn't mean to rush them, but any, any other commissioner comment?
Echo what Wendy says. Chairman, I just want to say thank you to Jason, Shannon, Levita, and all of the team that works on these budgets every year. It's, it's not a one and done, it's not a one-day deal, they, they work tirelessly behind the scenes. And I, I don't know how many awards we got to get to, to prove how good we are, or how good they are. But we just continue to get them, and they, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be anywhere without them, so I can't think y'all are doing an amazing job.
I like to thank my coworker, she puts in a lot of time to help get this call rolling, and I appreciate everything she does.
Thank you, lady. Thank you, everybody.
I make a motion. Can I make it adjourned?
We have a second?
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
As have it.